Is this call to order?
Yeah.
Thank you. Start with the roll call.
Mr. Cupka.
Present.
Terry Pavasich, here. Mike Davenport.
Here.
Sherrell Fuller, here. Dan Nicholas.
Here.
Rick Pavanato.
Here.
Don Renner.
Here.
And Simone Black.
Here.
Great, we have a quorum. Let's stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Our allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, thank you for coming, and we're starting out with one of our favorite things, the student perspective.
Student perspective, South High, Principal Schwartz.
Good evening, one of my favorite things as well, Dr. Cupka. Most months we have students here highlighting some of their extracurricular activities or co-curricular things that they've gone above and beyond for. Tonight I've asked a group of kids to come and talk to us because, quite frankly, every day they inspire me and humble me because they overcome obstacles in doing their day-to-day tasks that we all take for granted. So I've asked some of our students from our ELL program to come speak with you. Some of the amazing things is, many of these kids have been in our country for one year, and they're going to come and tell you about their experience, the impact of the program on them, and I'm going to ask them to introduce themselves, but I also want to point out, Ms. Katie Callahan is here from our staff representing our ELL and bilingual staff. So, students, I'm going to have you come and introduce yourselves now. Sol.
Hello, everyone. So, my name is Sol. I'm from Mongolia, and I'm a senior this year. I'm a little nervous. So, I was in yellow program since my freshman year, and when I first came to the United States, I didn't know any English. Whenever like people tried to come up to me and talk to me, I would say, "No English", which is kind of funny, but... And, um, yellow program really helped me and helped with my daily life. For example, like, I remember my teacher taught us, like, give us some, like, new vocabulary words, and he was like about like buildings, you know, like, "So, this is hospital. If you're sick, you go to hospital. If you get arrested, you go to police station. And if you're getting married, you go to courthouse, you know." And like, last month, me and my mom went to courthouse, and I didn't know, like, I didn't notice it that time, but then like after I get into courthouse, I was like, "Oh, wait, I remember this place, you know, like, I know what to do." And so, yeah, and the yellow program really helped me, not just me with my family too, since I'm the only one who speaks in English in my family, and I appreciate all of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Rim. I'm from Syria, and my native language is Arabic. I have been in the United States for one year, and I started school at DGES, and Downers Grove South, I mean, in January 2017. I...I don't know. I'm a little nervous.
It's okay.
When I started, I was in Level 1, but now I'm in Level 2, and I forget.
You're doing great.
ELL student, and I have learned many things. And, uh, when I started, I wasn't speaking English. My English was so bad, but now the ELL program helped me to improve my English, like, speaking, reading, and writing. My English is made my life so easy, and I'm so happy with my teachers and my school, and that's it.
Hi, my name is Jagat, and I'm from Syria. I speak Arabic. I have been here one year. I started school at Downers Grove South on August. When I started, I was in Level 1 for two months, and then I moved to Level 2. So I have learned many things. One way the ELL program helped me to improve my English. I would also like to share, when I came to here, at first it was a strange country. I don't, I didn't speak English. I didn't have friends, but now it's more easy than before. So, yeah, thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is James, oh, my name is James Sa, and I'm from South Korea, and my native language is in Korean. I moved here with my family. I've been in the United States for one year, and I went to Jefferson Junior High last year, and I started as a freshman at Downers Grove South this year. My family moved to America for my father's job, and when we moved here, we joined my grandfather and his family since they were already living here. And when I came to here, I couldn't speak anything, and I couldn't, like, understand everything, so it was hard to me, but... So when I started, I was in Level 1, but now I was moved to ELL Level 2. I took English classes for three years in Korea before I moved to America, but I got F from their class, but... So when I moved to America, everything was new, but I met friends and good teachers that helped me with my English at school. And also, I met friends at Korean church that only speak to me in English, and that has helped too. So I like going to school at Downers Grove South because the education is better than in Korea, and also the ELL teachers are really good at teaching, and they're, yeah, they're really good, and also there are more opportunities to participate in sports here, in sports here. Thank you. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
And are there any questions for any of us?
Any questions for you? Any questions?
I actually have a question for your teacher.
Yep.
How do you, you have, first of all, we're, I think we're, I speak for all of us when I say, "We're so glad you're all here with us."
Yeah.
And we're very, very impressed and just in awe of how well you all speak.
Thank you.
How do you, how do you, how do you do that? How do you approach? I mean, certainly you don't speak all these languages, or do you?
No, exactly. That's kind of the beauty, because I don't speak any of their languages, so our common language is English, so we just get on the same page with English, and we're all starting from the same point, and I try and learn, like, little teeny tiny bits of their languages just to say hello and goodbye, and to show them the same courtesy that they're showing me by showing up every day, and it's really their dedication to learning English and living here and emerging themselves in a language and a culture.
I had the privilege of observing five ELL classes this year, just based on the teachers I was observing. I saw them in math, I saw them in English, I saw them in two different ELL classes. There's a lot of visuals, and they develop their own common language because they're not only learning English, they're learning the content too.
Mm-hmm.
So when you go into Math 1, they're learning Math 1 also, so their communication is unbelievable when you see them in action.
I know you had mentioned that you were helping your family. Do all of you help your families?
Yeah.
Do everyday things here in the United States?
Yeah. My parents, they don't speak English, so I, every day, help them to speak English, to translate, to everything.
So that's really helpful for your family. Oh, it's just amazing, amazing. You guys are doing a great job. Thank you.
And I just want to say that I admire you guys coming and emerging yourself in a different environment, learning a different language. I mean, that's a very admirable thing to do, and you mentioned your English. Your English, you guys spoke great. I don't think I can learn any language and stand up in front of everyone within a year's time and feel as comfortable as you guys look doing it, so, thank you.
Well, that's going to be pretty hard to follow.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Simone gets to.
Simone can get to follow, so it's all on you, girl.
Got some updates from South. So, this is the first time we had finals before break, obviously. I personally liked it. A lot of my friends liked it. It was just a lot better to start a new semester after, you know, being gone from school for two weeks. We also have our upcoming longevity coffe house, which is coffee house, which longevity is our philanthropy this year, and so there's going to be a silent auction and different, people can sign up and perform at the coffee house, and that's coming up. And then also, the speech team recently held DGES varsity, which was a huge success. We had, I think, over 1,200 students participating in the tournament. Also, I went to Theater Fest, and me and about 20 other students went to Theater Fest last weekend. We went down to ISU and saw different performances and workshops, and Mr. Haywood, one of our directors, was the executive director of Theater Fest this year, and our set director, Mr. Evans, also built the set for the All-State Musical Big Fish, which is really good. Yeah, and then we also have our upcoming black history play, Fires in the Mirror, which is about the riots after, I forget what year it happened. I forget the name. It's something heights in Brooklyn, New York, and there was like an attack in the 90s of like a Jewish and a black kid, both got ran over by a drunk driver, and basically the black kid died, and the Jewish kid got taken to the hospital, and it's about like the tension and the different perspectives. It's really good.
Are you in it, Simone?
But, yeah, I'm in it, and, yeah, it's going to be really good.
No bias, sir.
And then, yeah, that's all I have so far.
Do you have dates for the play and for the cafe? And is the cafe open to the public or just students?
Yeah. The play is February 2nd and 3rd at 7 o'clock, and then I forget the exact date of the coffee house, but I think it's in a couple of weeks. Monday?
Yeah, that's...
Monday, Tuesday?
Sorry, a couple...
And that's open to the community?
Okay.
Okay.
That's good.
All right.
Good job, sir.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
Facility naming request.
All right. First item here, facility naming request. I did send a memo to the board on this, but just a reminder, the way that facility naming works by board policy is that a request can be made, and then there's a five-minute, or five-minute, five-year...
Big difference.
Big difference. Five-year waiting period before the board can consider that request. Just some, some history, this is for the North Fine Arts Wing. There's already a choir room, Room 136, that is named Pullman Hall. This would bring two other rooms kind of in line with that tradition of naming rooms in the Fine Arts Wing. I have, Brer Teague is here today as well to answer any questions that I don't answer or can't answer. I'm going to give just the quick synopsis of the two rooms. One is the North High Band Room, to be named Shoemaker Hall. That's Room 142. Mr. Shoemaker was the first band director, started in 1929 at North High, and was a major leader both at North High but in the profession. The other room is the Orchestra Room, to be named Savota Hall, Room 138. Mr. Savota was the director from 1950 to 1977, so a 27-year career in that program, and he built the foundation for the program that we know it as today. The process of this was that the recommendation was first sent to the superintendent five years ago, then this year in preparation for tonight, this was brought to the superintendent's Community Advisory Committee where there were no concerns over this, but they're the group that vets it from the community perspective. And then it comes to you for any questions tonight that you may have, which, if you have questions, I will turn those over to Brer at this point.
I have one question, and it's probably more for my fellow board members, I think. But I recall years ago, there was some discussion about naming one or both of the athletic fields. This is when I first started.
Yes.
Like, six years ago. So, at that point, the decision was made that we weren't going to name anything. At the time, it was for some students that had passed on, and I thought, I thought we had a policy that said we weren't going to give names to anything.
No, the, the policy says that a request can be made, then there's a five-year waiting period, and I think that that is, because a lot of times when there's a death or a tragedy or those kinds of things, a lot of times it feels like the right response to do would be to do something in honor of somebody. But this gives the board time, and for the community time, to kind of wait and evaluate it and look at it with a fresh set of eyes several years later, make sure that there's, time has passed between the request and the actual approval.
So my recollection actually is that, that, that's why we have this five-year...
Okay.
Waiting period. That's what you may be recalling. I remember this coming up five years ago, and I remember the discussion about, and it was, this was why we do this five-year wait, was because there was some controversy over naming a field and things of this nature. Is that, that's how I remember it.
Yeah. And, you know, to me, though, naming a field is a little different than naming part of the...
Well, it could be, but in terms of the policy, that's how we got here. So...
The policy is the same regardless of what we're naming.
Right, yeah.
I'm pretty sure of the answer to this, but these spaces aren't in any way affected by our master facility plan? No. Okay.
So, Brer?
Yes, sir.
It's been five years since you submitted the memo.
Yes, sir.
Any change of heart, change of mind, or...
Absolutely, no, absolutely not. In fact, this proposal is about 16, 17 years old, and it, we wanted to bring this idea to honor the Shoemaker family and the Savota family forward to the board at the same time that the most recent construction project was completed in 1999-2000. That's when the music classrooms at North High School moved from the second floor to the new space in which they are now. Before, the choir room had been located on the second floor, it had actually been, back in the 1920s and 30s, when it was just Downers Grove High School, been located on the third floor, on the most western edge of the building, close to what we would call the white gym or the gymnastics gym right now. And many years ago, the district decided to honor Mr. Pullman, who was the first major music director and teacher in the district, did mostly choral works. He wrote the North High School alma mater that we still perform after every home football game, et cetera. And so that room was Pullman Hall, and this idea of naming music rooms halls actually has some geographic history to it. It's much more common practice in the South, truthfully. You always hear music rehearsal spaces referred to as halls in the South, but it's also much more common at the collegiate level. But we moved the plaque when we opened the new choir room from Room 300, which was just being used as a, basically, in a completely different department, to honor Mr. Pullman, the choir director. We moved that plaque above the new choir room, and that's when we had the idea that this would make sense to just bring these other two rehearsal halls in line, and we started having this conversation, and it just kind of moved slowly down the process until I was, we were ready as a faculty to bring it forward at about the time that, Dr. Cupka, you mentioned, there was a tragedy in District 99, and there's several proposals came forward, and it just seemed that it was important to give pause and develop a policy and a waiting period. So, we submitted it, and I marked on my Google Calendar that I would like to come back this year and talk about it, so, thank you for considering it.
Thank you.
I was going to ask, who had the tickler to actually come back on five years? Because five years, I mean...
Well, you, you say that it's kind of funny, because when I came into the district, one of my first meetings with Brer, he brought it up, and then Julie had a tickler file as well and brought it up, so, we have people in this district that are highly organized that keep me in line, so...
That's what the Google reminders are for.
So there'll be a plaque then, connoting that...
That would be our recommendation, is that we would like to purchase an identical plaque that looks like the Pullman Hall plaque, and then just to fix it above the door in each of those rooms.
Are there any family members still of these individuals?
Yeah, the Savota, Savota family, the grandchildren, attended District 99 schools recently, and in fact, Mr. Savota just passed away last year, but he was back the year before he passed after we had made the proposal to the board, and I had the distinct pleasure to tour the facility with him. It was his first opportunity to see the new classroom, and we went to our alumni room together, we looked at some of the yearbooks. In fact, the, one of the cauldrons was dedicated in his honor by the student body at one point, and so we found that, and I actually took a picture of him in front of the orchestra classroom at that time, holding that yearbook, and, and I told him that if this, you know, went through, that we would love to invite him back. Of course, that can't happen now, but we will certainly let the family know if the district moves in this direction. The, really the only living survivor, the Shoemaker family, is Susan Shoemaker, who was his daughter-in-law. She lives in McComb, Illinois right now, but she's aware that this proposal has been made, and the family's extremely appreciative. You may know that the Shoemaker family instituted a large, basically, endowment for perpetuating arts experiences in the summer for students, and every year we give three major scholarships to South High School students and three major scholarships to North High School students in the Shoemaker name to give them the opportunity to study at summer music camps.
Any other questions? This will come up at the consent agenda next?
Consent agenda next, next week.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Physical education exemption procedures.
Okay. I'm going to turn a lot of this over in a second to Gina and our PE chairs, but I just want to give a little background before we get into the presentation. The reason why this topic is coming before you now is, last summer, as part of the new school funding formula, Senate Bill 1947, an outcome of that was an expanded set of options for physical education waivers, and in our district, it extends the option to the board to create some kind of a waiver for students in grades nine and 10. Out of that, we formed a small committee with the chairs. They brought together some PE teachers, we had administrators talking through this. We had to wait through the fall for Illinois State Board of Education to provide us some guidance on, a line in there talks about extending interscholastic sports or extracurricular sports. We needed to wait for the ruling that that meant district-sponsored sports. It's only athletics that occur through the district that could be eligible for this. It's important to note that although the state added those waivers in for physical education, they did not reduce any of the standards that our students are expected to learn as a result of being in physical education. So, they're allowed to exempt out of the program, but we're still expected to somehow deliver that content and information to all of our students by the time they graduate. So, there's some conflict in there as to how we're supposed to do that, so we're doing the best we can with two conflicting pieces of legislation. So what we're prepared to bring forward as a proposal, that will actually have to go to the Policy Committee next, would be to extend the option for physical education waivers to students in grades nine and 10 that are on varsity-level athletics. The reason for varsity is because once you're in that level, you're beyond the basic skills that are taught to the athletes, and you're now moved into the whole athlete, is what you're talking about, which in some ways mirrors some of the skills that we are teaching through our physical education curriculum. Also, in a review of that policy, students that exempt out and are taking a study hall for the duration of their sport, once that sport ends, they're supposed to return back to physical education class, because the experience that they're having through their sport has ended, they're supposed to return, leave the study hall, return back to the PE class, or they're supposed to start in the PE class for the beginning of the class until their sport starts. That hasn't traditionally been done here in District 99, but in a review and in compliance with the law, we're going to start that practice next year. So, right now, through the rest of the spring here, we'll work with our PE staff and our chairs to work through procedures. There'll have to be some instructional changes to make sure that kids can move in and out appropriately and, and that we're prepared for that. The other thing that we're going to do is make sure that when students are in a study hall, they're all enrolled in the course of their choice at the same time, so between digital resources like Google Classroom and those kinds of things, students will still have access to the content that's going on, so that if they want to check in, and also, this is one of the instructional changes, we'll have a day each week where if a student would like to drop into their PE class out of their study hall for that day and interact with the contact, content and teaching that's going on that day, they'll have the option to do so. So, so that's a nice change that students will be able to, to participate, especially if there's something that's new to them or something that, that they feel is essential. So, what we have going on today, Gina's going to go a little bit through the law changes and the policy, and then Courtney and Scott, our chairs here, are going to come on up and join her, and they're going to kind of go through some of the key highlights in some of our PE curriculum, to give you an idea of the kinds of experiences and content that our students are getting in that, and how you can see we're addressing kind of the whole student, the whole life, and preparing them for here, for their four years in high school and beyond through this curriculum. So I'll turn it over to Gina now.
Okay. Thank you. As Dr. Thiele said, we started looking at the changes in law, and in doing that, we looked at the overall school code revolving athletic PE exemptions. And so the school code, these first few bullets are pretty much the same as they've been. So there are certain parameters under which a student can be exempt from taking physical education class or being enrolled in daily physical education, enrolling in an academic class that, that they need or for graduation, participating in a marching band program only for credit, which, that doesn't pertain to ours, a special education support class, so a student only has so many periods in the day. If they need a special support, an intervention, for example, a special education student, they can be excused from PE too to get that support. Enrollment in ROTC, which doesn't apply here to District 99. But the last point is what Dr. Thiele's referring to, and that's that ongoing participation in interscholastic sport, and that's been extended now. It used to be grades 11, 12, and the change is for grades 7 through 12, which obviously for us only pertains to grades nine and 10. 11 and 12 have, have been that way for a very long time. So, in thinking about what that looks like for our students or could look like for our students, we would like to extend that opportunity to our 9th and 10th grade students, our athletes on a varsity team. So those 9th and 10th grade students who are varsity athletes, we'd like them to be eligible for this exemption. We feel that they're the highest level there of the sport, that they should have that opportunity as well. All of our students need to be enrolled in a minimum of six academic classes. That's been our standard of a full-time, minimal standard of a full-time student, and then as Dr. Thiele pointed out, this is really for that ongoing participation, which means while the student is involved in the sport, particularly that season, while the, while the season is in session. After students, after that season ends, those students then would go back into the PE class. 11th and 12th grade would be for junior varsity and varsity participation, again, the six classes, minimum of six classes, and then again, this would apply while in season. When the season is over, the students would go back in. So the, the two changes there is the opportunity now for 9th and 10th graders that didn't previously exist, and then the ongoing participation, where the students would either go back into class or be removed from class. So, obviously, if they're in the class first and the season starts, then they would go out of the class.
But they could have liked to stay in the class and do both.
Sure.
Sure, we don't. We wouldn't force a student. We don't, we don't even do that.
Get out of PE.
So I'm going to turn it over to Courtney.
Hey, good evening. Thanks for the opportunity to, to speak with you guys. This is my seventh, seventh year in the district, and Scott and I have worked hard over the seven years to not only create and develop content in our, in our programs, but also to come in line with each other. There wasn't a lot of, a lot of commonalities between our content when I, when I got here, and over the last seven years, I think we've done a lot of, a lot of good work in developing that. Now granted, there are some differences, and there will continue to be some differences, mainly because of facility differences and space issues, but the content is where we're really starting to make strides in, in our PLCs. Our teachers are doing a great job of working and developing content based on the state standards, and what you're seeing is a difference between physical education and athletics. If you guys remember back to your physical education days and your experiences, chances are it's probably just a lot of activity, not a lot of content, not a lot of teaching, not a lot of, not a lot of instruction. That's changed. Over the last 15 to 20 years or so, our profession has, has gone towards the route of fitness is important, but also so is content and understanding why you're doing what you're but also so is content and understanding why you're doing what you're doing. So, therefore, we've created that difference between physical education, where we use physical activity as a vehicle to drive our content, much like an English teacher would develop a content and use the book to try and get that content across. That's what we're doing in physical education. We're using physical activity as that, as that vehicle. Athletics in itself is what it is, and I'm not going to read through the bullet points, but we've created that difference. And I think we're a lot more instructional than we, than we ever have been. And we really value that piece for all of our students to be able to grasp and develop. The state standards, can you go and click on that for me, please? The state standards that we're speaking with, they're on the screen there. If you scroll down a little bit, there are about five, I think it's five standards that relate to physical education or physical development and health. These are the standards that we've created all of our content after. Every activity, and you're going to see here in a few seconds, every assignment, every instructional piece that we've put together, we've gone based on the state standards from either early high school for our 9, 10 classes to late high school for our 11, 12 classes. And we're really trying to mirror those, those state standards. So, we're getting all of those across. Our students at some point in time are getting all this information through their classes, regardless of which class they take. All right. Could you go back to the next slide for me, please? All right. Again, thanks for having us tonight. This is just an example. Some people often ask, well, what type of instruction, what type of curriculum are we talking about? This is just a quick snapshot of like what the first eight weeks of classroom would look like in a freshman PE class. So, these are your lessons and the targets that they're going to be looking at, completing pre-assessments and learning targets and analyzing fitness test scores, to learning about skill-related fitness components, weight training and circuits. So, it's not just about going in, as Courtney said, and getting the activity. We're just using that as the vehicle for these materials that we really think, and the state values according to the state standards. So, this is just a snapshot of that. The next slide, just kind of, I grabbed one of those lessons, just to kind of show you how we would break down that particular lesson. And these are all of the objectives that we would expect our students to learn from just that one day in class. So, demonstrating how to actually practice and measure their heart rate, determining their heart rate, how to calculate it and things like that. And I think you all can agree that these are things that you need to know lifelong. This is not just something for right now. This is something so you know how to be healthy and live a healthy lifestyle for the rest of your life. And that's kind of what we're trying to get at. Well, some of the work that we've been doing in our, in our PLCs is not only just developing content, but also developing sequencing. So, a PE2 classroom topic, some of the topics you'll see there are the same thing, the same topic, if you will. One thing that we're working on is introducing it at the freshman level, and then starting to dig a little bit deeper as they move forward into sophomore, junior, and senior year, so it's more application-based. And again, as Scott said, it really is lifelong. So, how you apply it looks different in everybody's life. Can you click on the link for me, please? Basically, what you're going to see here is a block plan. This is generally what a unit would look like. We're using Ultimate and Speedball as our vehicle to talk about aerobic and anaerobic activity. I put the purple, I'm sorry, excuse me. I put the purple blocks in there to kind of give you an idea of, okay, we're going to make these classroom days. Where in the past, we've kind of sprinkled our content every single day. We're going over all that content. But for those students who may not be in class, who've taken the exemption for whatever personal reasons they have, we're going to let them know, hey, this first day of the week, this happens to be the beginning of the school year, which is why you see the locks and syllabus on there on day one. But those would be the days that the student could come to class if they, if they chose to, to get that information and get that content. The other areas in red are also assessments, but those are AFLs, assessments for learning. Those generally are not graded. They obviously, obviously would be able to take those if they wanted to, because they would be on Google Classroom if they, if they wanted to continue that information and that learning or gathering that information for their learning. So, just an example of what it could look like at a PE2 level.
But would they have to submit their assignments, even though they weren't in the class?
When they are actually exempt from their sport, no, they would not.
Okay.
No, they would not. When they come back from their sport and are part of the classroom, then yes, they would. Once again, this is just, now, I picked a junior, senior class, and obviously with these, these students choose. So, now they're picking classes that they find interest in or things like that. So, once again, this is a junior, senior, Fitness One class. These are kind of the lessons, and this is what the student would get on day one. So, they know exactly what lessons we are discussing each week, and they can get ahead of the material. Now, in the next slide, again, this is just Fitness One, the nutrition review, some of the objectives. But what I really want to click on, could you get that link for me, please? There's been some questions or some people might want to know, well, the kids that are exempt, how are they supposed to get this information when they're not in? You know, if they're going to be responsible for it? This is just an example of our Fitness One Google Classroom, that every student, even when they're exempt, will be able to have access to. So, you're basically seeing a blog here where they can go back and forth with fellow students in the class, and also with the teachers, asking questions. Teachers can respond. You'll see who posted it, things like that. And then, most importantly, could you click on the about up at the top? Once you click on this and it loads, as he scrolls down, once it loads, you will see now, every lesson and the date that it is taught, which week it is taught, all of the materials that are, that the students are given, videos, everything for that lesson, they will be given right here. So, even if they are not in class that day, cannot make it to class that day, are exempt, and for some reason can't attend, they are going to be able to get all of the material that was taught that day, videos, everything, so that they will not fall behind. And if they do have questions, as I said, with anything, they can just go back and they can email the teacher, and there's that constant communication, even though they're not face-to-face and seeing them every single day.
I'm not following. How are they not falling behind if, if they're not, if they're not responsible because they're exempt? So, they're not going to be responsible for any sort of measurement of how well they understand this material, because they weren't there and they're not required to? So, how?
It's about, Mike, it's about providing them the opportunity to interact with those standards while they're exempt.
Are we going to, so, if you have a student that misses three-quarters of the semester's gym class because they're exempt in a varsity sport, and they come back for the last eight weeks or whatever, is that?
They just pick up with the course at that point.
What about finals?
If, they'd have to be in the class for a minimum amount of time. And that's the, that's all the procedural stuff we're going to have to work through over the next few months, so that everybody instructionally understands how that's all going to work. But you'd have to be in the class for a minimum amount of time to earn a grade and to receive a grade.
And I think it is important that we're, the way we're designing this is, the students are going to know which days, and we're really going to leave it up to them. If they would like to come into the classroom, come out of the study hall when they're exempt, they're more than welcome. The seat is there, and they can come in and get that face-to-face instruction. So, that is an option. We're leaving that up to the kids. We're not going to make it mandatory. But if they want to come in when they're exempt, so that they can learn the material face-to-face, that's going to be there.
And not only on these days, they actually can contact me any point in time as a teacher. They must, I saw this on, I couldn't go to the classroom, I saw on a classroom, can you give me some feedback? Can you meet me before school, whatever the case may be? I let my teachers know that, hey, there's a change of practice. We're going to be available for these students at any point in time, not like we weren't anyway.
But they are going to be responsible for, let's say, a student went out for football, and you know that that starts the beginning of the school year and maybe goes through...
Thanksgiving if they make the playoffs.
Thanksgiving. Yeah. So, you know, for us, that's only going to be a month's worth of class time.
Right.
If that.
If that.
Yeah.
Right, which is, that's what we're going to, we're going to work through some minimum amount of time that you would have to be in the course to actually earn the grade versus just receiving the exemption.
Okay. So, that's only four weeks of a, what is it?
Eighteen weeks.
Eighteen weeks?
Right. So, that's probably not enough to earn a grade. You'd just be exempt. But by law, you're back in the class for those last four weeks of the class.
So, do we give them a test for the last four weeks of what materials that they were present for?
No.
I mean, I'm just, I'm just asking that because I think if, if you're exempt from something, I think it's hard to hold them responsible for material that was covered in that...
You're being held, you're being held responsible for material while you're in that, that class.
But how do you meet the standard?
Yeah.
That's, that, as I said at the beginning, this is where the state of Illinois has given us kind of an untenable position to be in. Because by law, when this, when the activity is not going on, students are, this is how it goes in every high school in Illinois. This is how it works with exemptions. So, I know you, I know it doesn't sound clean and easy, because it's not. But this is how exemptions in Illinois work.
So, technically, the district will have to come up with a way to make this as equitable as you can.
Correct. Which is what we need to work on this spring. Yep. Is to how this will work instructionally with our students.
I guess I have a problem being held responsible for, I guess I have a problem with being held responsible for...
No, you're not being held, you're having the opportunity to access that material. You're not being held responsible for content when you're not there.
Yeah. But then, are we making a final for, let's say, those last four?
No, we're going to have to come up with a minimum amount of time you're in the class to experience the final, which is all the pieces that we need, we need to work through instructionally over the remainder of this school year.
See, what I was wondering is, is with, with this, I mean, I've got a, so, I've got a junior daughter right now, who'll be senior next year. And she wasn't excited because she came home, I found out about this the day she went in to register for a class. And she, she's like, Dad, next year, when I, I'm going to have to take PE, go to my, go to a PE class, you know, when I'm not in, she's a gymnast. So, is that right? And I said, yeah, it sounds like that's the way this is going. It almost seems to me, because this has not been the practice.
No, it has not been the practice.
And it seems to me that we're, we're being obligated to teach, you know, this late high school, early high school, you know, targets we're supposed to be meeting. Almost seems to me that we need to maybe rethink our curriculum in a way that, that can cater to athletes who are getting exemptions, so that, that the content can be delivered in a shorter, you know, more condensed amount of time. You know, I, you know, because I've got, I'm thinking Andrea's a gymnast. Her season will end at the end of February or so, right? And so, then she's got a few months. And I'm wondering what that, what that few months looks like. And I, what I'm understanding is that you just would pick up where, wherever the class is at.
Yes.
To think that she's going to take time, she may want to.
She may want to.
But she's not going to take, I tell you, she's not going to have the time, I mean, she may even have the interest. But the time isn't going to be there for her, as much as you're making all this available to her. I can tell you that with her schedule right now and whatever, I mean, sometimes my kids, I feel like, I understand, I mean, I'm just, I'm like in awe of how much they can, they can do. And, and we saw some example of that tonight with some of these EOL students. I mean, wow. What, the time they had to put in to get to where they are tonight. I'm just, I'm just thinking that where we have the structure right now doesn't really work real well with this change that we've got now.
However, we're making far more accommodations for students than most high schools in this area will. So, I'm saying, we are already, with what's being shown to you tonight, like this content posted online from the beginning of the course, is far more access to information than provided at most high schools in the state of Illinois. So, we're light years ahead of where most places are. What you're saying with the student coming in and out, this is what happens by state law to be in compliance with the exemption law across the state.
I guess I...
It's just unusual for, it's a change for District 99.
I was going to say, I guess I have another question. Is, are the exams generally written exams, or are they physical exams? Because you guys are kind of talking about the final exam piece of it. I really don't know. I've never asked my daughter for her PE. Is it written?
There's both. There's both.
It's both.
Because our assumption is that potentially, an athlete could probably pass the physical piece of it, so.
Although they establish benchmarks for themselves within the class.
Yeah. It really just depends on the class that they're taking. And I will say that most of our athletes do take a fitness class for that reason, because it's going to help them with their, their athletic sport and what they're doing. So, and most coaches want them lifting anyway. So...
Right. Right. And then, I, my second thought was, you know, potentially, a non-athlete would probably have a different perspective on this as well, because they're taking a PE class that is generating the grade, right? So, that would probably provide a different perspective than, than the athlete, potentially.
I agree. I just, I'm caught up in the, the state's obligating us to, to, you know, teach the kids all of these things. Yet, they're saying you can have the kids out of the classroom for sports.
Like I said, the two laws contradict.
And it's contradictory. So, I'm trying to figure out how we, how we solve that, because I, and I appreciate that we're light years ahead. We usually are. It's, I love everything we're doing here. But I think this is a problem, and we need to, we need to figure out a way to solve it in a meaningful way.
Can we go back to slide two on here, the school code, the Illinois school code?
When we saw the early high school, late high school, is that?
No, no.
That graph?
The one with the bullets.
What the law states. I think it was the second overall slide.
It says school code.
It says school code on it?
It was the first slide after the title.
Go back to the slideshow.
This, Paul, this one?
This, no.
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 It's the second one. You got the title page?
The title on the slide is school code.
No.
One more back.
That one.
So, my, my question is, so, a student who's in a sport elects to exempt out or opt out.
Correct.
Has to go into a study hall. They can't use that opportunity to take an AP class?
No, some students go into AP class. Then, they would just be in the class.
So, these are only for students who exempt out and don't take a class, that take a study hall?
Correct. Then, they're in a study hall, then that's right.
So, if they go, so, okay, that makes more sense.
Because on academic, that, that's considered kind of an academic waiver.
Okay.
And then, you're waiving and taking that slot and filling it with another class, in which case, then you're, you're in a different content strand at that point.
So, based on this, then, can any student opt out of PE to take an academic class?
No.
And why not? I mean, I'm reading this. It says, student...
Because they have to have the physical activity.
But it says, "The district may excuse pupils from physical education to enroll in an academic class required for mission, post-academic education, or to enroll in class required for graduation." When I read that, I would think that anybody could opt out.
We do that in the case of when a student needs to make up a credit to move in, or because of their four-year academic plan needs that additional slot. We don't do that across the board, because then you're kind of, then you're choosing that we're just going to ignore a certain set of standards that are required by the state, right?
My question is, then...
I think Don was next.
Okay. I'll go after Don then.
I defer.
My question is, if you're in a sport, you could not go to study hall and take an academic class, correct?
Correct.
So, what's...
We have very few students that do that.
Well, what's stopping a student, then, who wants to take an AP class, to join a no-cut sport and then take the AP class?
Nothing. And it's never been prevented. Students have been able to do that.
But why should we, why should a student have to go that route? Why, if they want to take an AP class for college, that they would get credit if they get a three or better on the test, why would they have to join a no-cut sport to get, just to get into that AP class?
If they're not an athlete, you're saying?
Yeah. No, I just say, go out for this. There are no-cut sports that you could join, where you, you compete against your personal best, like cross-country. Hundred kids on the team. You compete all season long, and by the end of the season, you are getting better and better and better. So, you join that sport because you know it's pretty much no-cut, just to take the AP class. But the kid who wants to take the AP class without having to do the sport can't.
They didn't know this, or did you just share? Well, I don't know how they can take a class.
I've been in my argument for a couple of years. So, I've had this argument for a couple of years.
We're going to go down and then...
Yeah. But I don't understand how they can take a class when, you know, okay, if they're going to go out for cross-country, let's say it starts in February, so they've...
August, yeah.
They've missed, oh, okay, fall.
It's a fall sport.
All right, sorry.
Right. For this, you'd be...
But they're going to miss four weeks, either the beginning or the end of the class.
They don't have to go out of an academic class.
No, this is only for kids in study hall.
So, the only option where we're giving that exemption for is if you're enrolled in either a sport that lasts the entire semester.
Oh, it has to last.
Or it's a combination of sports that make up that, nearly that entire semester, in which case, then you would have the space in your schedule to then enroll in that course.
Oh, so you can't do it if you're going to go out for football, and then that's it?
Nothing else. No. You'd have to do...
So, it, but then...
Which is what we've always had.
But then, let's say you go out for football, basketball, and track.
And track.
Then, you don't take PE at all?
Correct.
And you don't, do you get credit so that you can graduate?
It exempts that requirement from your graduation, from your whole course of study.
So, they're not going to be responsible for any of the testing or anything?
No. No.
No.
Wow.
But they could take a, an AP class then, or they could take an academic class.
Yeah, yeah.
Nope, that's the way, that's the way the law is written.
And the Illinois law will allow us to allow any student to exempt out a PE to take a class, take an academic class.
It's supposed to be under specific situations that we do that, where it's like part of their four-year course of study.
Now what we do, what does Illinois require?
No, that's what, that's what it's intended to be, that it's part of your four-year course of study, not to just, I, I just wanna fill up courses with other, you know, like I wanna take four science classes every semester. That's not what this is intended for. It's intended for, the exemption is intended for students that need to make up credits because they've failed certain courses and need to graduate in a certain amount of time, so to create space for that. It's intended for students in special education, or for students as part of a four-year academic program where that's the only way they can squeeze in their content that they need for what comes next in their life. It's not meant to be just a broad exemption for any kid that doesn't want to take physical education.
So, so maybe I'm misunderstanding this.
Wait, 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 Sean, I'm sorry.
Okay.
We're gonna go Don, then Simone, then Sherrell.
It's okay, no, I, my question got answered in discussion.
Okay. Simone?
I was just gonna add, like, how is a kid supposed to, like, do well in the class or get the content from the PE if they're gonna be gone most of the semester?
Yeah.
That's Terry's point.
Right, while they're gone, they are not responsible for that content. They have the opportunity to interact. We're extending that opportunity for them, so they can learn those skills should they want to.
So they don't have to.
They don't have to.
But you could take the time.
But when you come back, you're expected to pick up with that course right on that day and move forward.
So I was, and I misses something with, if it's a ninth or 10th grader, they're only exempt from this if they're doing a varsity sport.
Correct.
So we're really talking about the 11th and 12th graders.
Which is what it has always been.
Right, it's always been that way.
The only difference, the, so here's the key, this is what it boils down to, the key changes, is we're extending what we have always offered for exemptions to students in grade nine or 10 that are involved in a varsity level sport.
Right.
Because of the rigor and the, the different focus that you have with athletes that are at the varsity level. All of our other exemptions work exactly as they have in the past. If you are a student that is on a waiver for PE, and then you're matched up with a study hall for that amount of time, for when your activity ends, you go back into the PE class. That, that is complying with state law, that is the law. So, and then we will work with our instructional experts to figure out how to make that work, what the requirements will be for grading, for everything else. Some of this might be on a course-by-court, because one course may be very different, like our ninth grade courses for freshmen are very different than our fitness classes for upperclassmen. So we need to work through that with our instructional leaders this spring to figure out how all of the details work with this. But other schools in the area have all worked through that.
So you're gonna come back to us, you've heard some of our questions, I know Mike's got one more question. You've heard our questions, this is, there's nothing we're voting on, this is informational only.
Correct.
And you understand why we're perplexed.
Sure, it's a change.
It's, it's a huge change, and I'm not thinking it's a bad change, but I just don't understand how we're gonna meet the standards. So you'll come back to us with these questions that you've gotten from this discussion.
Right, we'll work through the details and we'll provide an update.
So, so how's the scheduling gonna work with this? I mean, I, I, I'm, because, because the other thing about this, right, is that a lot of the varsity athletes need to leave early.
Some of the varsity athletes do, in specific sports, golf.
It happens, right?
Football, yeah, bowling.
And they specifically schedule things for that last period, so that-
Right, yeah.
So are we gonna, are they gonna be able to, I'm just, so I'm, so now they've gotta plug this PE class into their schedule.
Yeah.
And this could really limit their access to be able to take other classes that they really wanna take, because this has gotta get plugged in.
No, it shouldn't make a difference, Mike, because right now it's scheduled in as a study hall.
Right, it's a study hall.
There's already a spot held on their schedule.
Okay.
It's a study hall, so it gets, gets piggybacked, it's mirrored with a PE course of some sort. So each, and that's why we're talking about with students now, because students will have to select a PE course that when, if and when their exemption either ends or before it starts, they'll be in that course for that period. And then, as the law intends, when the interscholastic sport isn't in session, you're in that class. When that interscholastic sport is in session, you're in study hall.
So supposedly you rotate them in and out, let's say-
You're gonna rotate them in and out.
Let's say eighth period, you know, you have all the, the basketball team would be in that study hall.
Yep.
At the beginning of the year, and then when the football kids are done, they go into it and the basketball kids come out of it.
Mm-hmm.
You know, that kind of thing.
Courtney, can I ask you a question? How would that affect the teacher in the classroom? Now, so maybe he has this number of students all year, and now the last four weeks he has this influx of potentially maybe, if we're talking like football, maybe 40, 50 students in that class, all of a sudden now he's got 40 more kids in that class. How would that affect his ability? I mean, you don't wanna overwhelm.
Right.
You, you, there's only so many kids, and then you reach a point where there's too many.
That's why, man, that's why we're, we're really stressing trying to get our athletes in our strength and conditioning courses. Now we have periodization that we can work with. If I know I have kids who are in class that are gonna be going out in, say, November 1st, whoever the case may be, I know I can develop a program that is specific for preseason conditioning. And at that flip switch, at the November 1st mark, if I know I have kids that are going out and coming back in, now I know that my football players who are, whose season's over, I'd love to go to state meet, the state meet, but we'll see what happens. Now I know they're coming in off-season.
Right.
Now I have a different protocol that I can start working with them on, now they're coming in for a postseason workout, we can develop that as well. It'd be a lot easier in that fitness class than it would be in, say, dance or team sports.
Or freshman PE.
Correct.
Right. That's why we've been very judicious about the varsity level for grades nine and 10. It's a lot different curriculum to plan for with the student coming in and out than a fitness.
Right, I mean, there's a staffing, you could potentially have a whole nother section of a PE class for one hour.
Mm-hmm, that is possible, yes.
That's, all right, so what about the driver's ed exemption? We've been applying for that.
That's, that's not the same kind of exemption, that's a waiver with the state that allows us to exempt that out, to replace the PE requirement with the driver's ed class.
I'm wondering where that is, because that's yet another-
As part of Senate Bill 1947, they lowered the restrictions on getting those waivers, and those waivers likely will be procedural and will continue to be processed much easier than they had been in the past.
Because that's another piece that takes away time from being able to deliver all the-
Right, it's how many slots do you have in an entire four-year plan? We can, we plan on continuing to do that waiver moving forward, and the process for doing it is a lot less stringent than it used to be.
And then the third bullet point up there, participation in marching band program for credit.
Yes.
I've seen those marching band kids work.
But we don't offer a marching band program for, we don't have a credit-bearing marching band class.
So-
Band class.
But we don't have a credit-bearing marching band class.
Right, I know that we don't.
They don't get credit for it.
So what I'm wondering is, is that something that we could do in some shape or fashion?
That is not something that has come forward from our fine arts department at this point. So no, we don't have it, and it hasn't been discussed yet.
But is this a new, this is a-
No, that's been there, that's been there for years.
That's been there forever.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, then. I thought this may, I thought this was a new possibility.
No, no, that one's been there, that one's been there since I was a band teacher.
Okay.
Very few program.
Back in the dark ages.
Very few, yeah, back in the dark ages. Very few program, very few schools have a marching band class.
Don, don't give up your opportunity.
Yeah, here it is, bring it.
It's time.
Had a really nice time Friday night at the Downers Grove North basketball games, watched the sophomore game and the varsity game. You know, having participated in basketball myself in high school, I know as a sophomore I worked just as hard as I did as a junior and senior. I don't really see the distinction that you guys are making and drawing between varsity and lower-level athletics, and I, I'm not sure I could explain that to a parent who has a freshman or sophomore who's probably doing just as much lifting, has just as many practices, and is going through the same general schedule that the varsity program is. And if I'm right, I think I only saw one sophomore on the North High School basketball team. So I guess I'd like to hear a little bit more of an explanation as to why you'd only be exempting varsity-level athletic participation for ninth and 10th grade students.
I think there's two pieces, it's not only the athlete experience, right? So most of the time the varsity level is operating at a different level with those athletes than a lower level. But the other part is the amount of content and curriculum and skills we are giving our freshmen, especially our freshmen and then sophomore students that are in there, is you saw how that content builds. We feel that you, you don't, you want students to have that experience. We do a lot of whole-life preparation for our students in there, we do whole-life skills in there. For example, that's where we bring in some of our social emotional support, that's this year where we brought in our signs for suicide and those kinds of things. That's the course where we start teaching that stuff freshman year. The more students that are exempt out of that, the fewer students that get that essential content that they need to be healthy for their four-year career and beyond.
In the case that we shouldn't exempt even varsity for ninth and 10th, though.
Right, well-
Because I, again, I don't see a distinction between participation in sophomore basketball and varsity.
Depends on the sport, I think, too.
It may, may very well be, but-
And I think several of our teachers would agree with you there and say we shouldn't extend those exemptions at all. However, the expectation from certain community members-
Yeah.
Is that we find a way to, the law offered the board the opportunity to expand those exemptions, and we're getting a feel from members of the community that we find a way to expand these in some way.
I just don't want it to be arbitrary, is, is my point. And, because if it's, if it's arbitrary, you're gonna have complaints. And I, I would like to, to receive, I, I hear you, Hank, I do, but I think from what I heard, you can make the case that, well, then all ninth and 10th graders need to have that education. So if we can expand upon that, I'd, I'd like to hear it.
Yeah, I, I think it's just because the level of functioning that's happening at the varsity level, you're moving beyond skills and you're focusing more on the basic skills of the sport, was our rationale. We talked, Courtney or Scott, anything else that you'd like to?
Yeah, we talked about that, and we did hit on certain sports. You know, you look at, like, watching film, things like that, that doesn't take place at the freshman and sophomore level.
Okay.
I was an athlete myself, and no, that never happened, but at the varsity level, you're spending hours watching film, so now you're not only looking at the activity, you're looking at how you're applying this, and that's that higher-level thinking. So that's kind of where we came to that varsity level, that was one piece that we looked at. And I mean, there were a couple, but that was, that was one piece.
Regarding the strength and conditioning, they're really starting to somewhat introduce that at the sophomore level, more towards the end, end of their season, as we're starting to prepare for varsity. Specifically, football, basketball, other sports, they're, they're rarely doing that part at the, at the 10 level, the nine, 10 level for that matter, as far as strength and conditioning. It's, it's really an introduction, too, and some of the information that we're teaching in class, let's say majority of the information that we're teaching in class, is acted upon within those, those training programs.
So that's- So across the board, it would be the district's opinion that, you know, non-varsity participation in almost all sports, there's gonna be quite a distinction between the level of physical attention, skill, what have you, at the non-varsity level versus the varsity level.
Yeah, that's what we're saying.
And this is, this issue also, when we talk about 11th and 12th graders, we're talking about far less JV-level athletes in those years. There, it's, it still exists.
But, and the law is always exempted-
Right.
-11th and 12th for JV or varsity.
So I'm just making the, you know, making the point that, that the ninth and 10th grade, I think that there, there's a far more number, if you were to let the JV and the, and varsity exempt, you'd have a lot of, you know, a lot of students exempting. Whereas in the, when you look at the 11th and 12th grade students that are exempting, most of them are varsity athletes by that point.
10th grade is also-
Just, just a question on that, too, because so, and JV's different than how I grew up playing sports, because JV in Indiana for basketball was, you know, a higher level than ninth and 10th grade. My understanding in the basketball here is that the ninth and 10th graders play ninth and 10th unless they can make varsity, and JV is for the students who are 11th and 12th who can't make varsity? Is that right?
It's not really a separate sport.
And gymnastics.
They're on varsity.
A lot of playing time.
So they play JV games.
Okay, okay.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, so do we have any other questions?
So you're looking for, at some point, once we work out the, the details, an update provided to the board on, instructionally, how we're gonna make this work to the best of our ability within what's there. Can we go to that final slide, just?
Can we also, though, when we have that update, we do have a list, I know Julie's been smoking over here.
It's not literally.
Not literally.
That wouldn't be healthy.
Writing, writing, writing.
And illegal.
We, we also have a list of questions and concerns, so in addition to the update, we'd appreciate if you would take us, refresh us as to what our concerns were and what the final answers to those.
Sure.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Okay, last slide.
So this is again, just going back to point out some of the differences, the ninth and 10th grade, the varsity athletics. 11th and 12th grade has been pretty much our program thus far. The only difference, of course, is those students that are in a study hall during the season, when the season is over, would go back into the course. So the, the primary change is the ninth and 10th grade for varsity athletics, and then the go, either going back into or out of class opposite study hall when you're not in season, when the athlete is not in season.
Okay, any other questions, come out.
I think that was enough.
Yeah. What's that?
I, I think that was enough.
You hear that enough?
Well, you probably expected-
I knew this was not be, even though it's theoretically two small changes, right, there's a lot of process that we're, as you can see, there's a lot of process we're working through.
Okay, moving swiftly on.
Thank you, guys, thank you.
To the master facility plan, community engagement update?
Yes, so master facility plan and what we're doing with community engagement, just a few things that I wanna point out. We've circulated amongst staff and the board, has also received some North and South High just talking points and highlights to try to group that and summarize for our teams. We've prepared a 20-minute presentation with an opportunity for questions after that, and have reached out to our key folks in the community, our, our key influencer database, and offered up our opportunity to provide those informational presentations to school groups, or homeowners' associations, or whoever would like us to come in and give a little informational presentation. And we also have put together a kind of speakers bureau of staff that would be interested in giving those, because we've noticed a lot of those meetings all happen on the same night, so we need kind of a pool of people that can go out and give those presentations. We've circulated to both the board and to employees a list of do's and don'ts when referendum is going on, so I'd encourage board members to at least, you know, dig in on that one and make sure that we're going through, and we've shared that with employees as well. Tony, if you could pull up our FAQ. This is a new feature put together by, really Jill and Kristen have put together this FAQ along with a whole bunch of administrative input, and this is based on questions we've received throughout all of the presentations we've given over the last year and a half. So, it's a cool thing you can find on our website. We've kind of categorized it by theme, and then, go ahead and hit one of those pluses there, Tony. So, you can see, it kind of just flies out within that theme what some of our key questions are responding to those. Then, we've prepared a community letter, which has been shared with the board, and a fact sheet that will go out to every household to kind of close this communication cycle that we've done, where we asked all their opinions, and we got a lot of their feedback, and the board took action. We feel it's important to now let the whole community know, now what? What happened? Where did we end up? What's next? So, that's going out to every household in the district. And then, it is also informing every household about our two presentations that are coming up. One at South High on February 21st at 7:00 PM, and the other at North High on February 22nd at 7:00 PM. Both those presentations will involve that, about a 30-to-40-minute presentation, a tour of the facilities, and then, anybody who would like to come back after the tour and do a Q&amp;A session, I'll stick around and, and take any open questions that people have. After they've had the opportunity to see the presentation, go see the facilities, if they still have questions, at that point, we'll just take them as they're there. So, that's everything that's going on with that one.
Any questions or comments? Okay, moving on to the reception of visitors, this is an opportunity for audience members to address the board on any topic pertaining to Community High School District 99. Is anybody going to address the board?
I would like to.
Okay. Come on up to the...
Microphone.
...microphone. And we're going to limit your statements to three minutes to provide all visitors an equal opportunity to address the board.
Okay, well, I'd like to bring a picture on my phone up for you, so if anybody else...
You have to come up to the microphone. And you need, we need you to state your full name, and just to make sure you understand the proceedings are being taped recorded.
Okay, I'm Deanne Merrick. I graduated from Downers South in 1977. My children have attended Downers North from 95 to 2016. So, I'm a lifer here. But I want to speak to the facility renaming. But I'd like to show you a picture, but I turned my phone off when I stupidly didn't do it before it started, so I'd like to bring up...
If you forward it to me, I can make sure that the board gets it.
It's tricky.
Okay.
Let me just, let me just see if I can get, so if anybody else would like to speak, just give me a second.
Okay, we'll just give you a...
Okay.
I'd like to bring back before the end of school, we were talking. She just came around. We're not ready for that conversation. We're starting a committee next year to really dig in.
Okay, so we haven't forgotten it?
No.
There's the picture, but I don't know...
Okay.
Can I?
Yeah, just walk around and show everybody real quick.
Okay, this is, this is, oh, no, his head is covered. Oh, no, there's his wife. Oh, that's terrible. Do you know how to get that out of there?
No.
Well, that was a great idea.
Well, if you do forward it to me, I will forward it onto the board.
I will do that. It's John Sfoboda.
Okay.
It, it's John Sfoboda. So, okay, so I was an orchestra member. When I was in sixth grade, my friends came back to class after orchestra and said, "Mr. S. needs somebody to play the string bass." Okay, so I started taking string bass lessons in the summer between sixth grade and seventh grade, back when we had portable classrooms at Downers South, because we didn't have enough room to have all the classes inside, but they were air-conditioned. So, I learned how to play, was in the orchestra at O'Neill for seventh grade, met my best friend there. We were the string bass section of the junior high orchestra. And John Sfoboda came to me one day in the spring and said, "I got something I want you to try, and it's a lot easier to transport than that string bass. Your mother is going to be so happy." And it was a violin. And so, then, in the summer between seventh grade and eighth grade, I learned how to play the violin, and it was just really cool. I mean, it was a really cool experience with this guy. And he deserves, he deserves this plaque. He died, actually, two years ago. But, in 2013, he came back when his last grandson graduated from the district, and he conducted the one song, and they invited all the alum to come back, and we came back and, and played with them, and it was really cool. It was really cool to see him up there again. And I wrote a little, my time's probably up, but if you have a minute.
Go ahead.
I have the introductory, I found in my files the introductory speech, or whatever, that I wrote while the orchestras were making a switch there in 2013. And I'd really like to read you parts of that, just to try and, I mean, I could stand up here for a half hour easily and tell you wonderful things about this guy, things that you probably wouldn't believe, because in this day and age, you can't do the stuff that he did. It would be, it would be not good now, because of just the way the world has become. For instance, he started a weightlifting program, because at that time, the district didn't have enough money for a weightlifting program, and he just held those informal things in his house. And, I mean, his own time, his own money, you, you couldn't, I'm sure you couldn't do that now. But, he could. He was an old bohemian, hard-working, "We'll, we'll figure out how to get it done. If we don't have the money, well, we'll, we'll build it," or, or whatever. People who had the 7 o'clock lesson time at O'Neill, private lesson, 7:00 AM, he came to pick us up so that our parents didn't have, we couldn't take the bus, because the bus didn't drop you off in enough time. If you had the 7 o'clock time slot, he just picked you up. I know you, you, you wouldn't believe this kind of stuff, because nobody in their right mind would be able to do that in this time and age, but he could, and he did. I also had the rather unfortunate 5 o'clock spot, 8:00 PM at his house one year, and that was bad, because we smelled his wife's wonderful cooking while we were supposed to be playing. But, he was, he was just a fantastic asset to this district. So, here's part of my speech from, from 2013, before, when we were, when he was conducting for his last time. "It is an honor and a privilege to introduce this evening's guest conductor, John Sfoboda. For nearly 30 years, he was a truly gifted music educator in Districts 58 and 99. He was instrumental, pardon the pun, in developing the district-wide string program that is still alive and well today, some 36 years, now, this was five years ago, 36 years after his retirement. John Sfoboda spent his career nurturing and inspiring countless young musicians, primarily in Downers Grove. He started his tenure on the north side of town and migrated south when Downers Grove South opened. He organized curriculum that he taught to fifth and sixth graders at the grade schools, seventh and eighth graders at the junior high, and freshmen through seniors at the high school each and every day. The man juggled three separate curriculums each and every school year for almost 30 years. But, the actual music education component was only part of what made him such a gifted educator. The man was way ahead of his time. Our learning environment was much like the score of a symphony, a product made by combining many parts. He integrated learning with teamwork, a pinch of community, a dash of family, and a whole lot of belonging. Nobody cut his class. If you weren't there, you were either sick, or you had been hauled down to the dean's office for whatever reason. His orchestra class was an opportunity to kick back with your concert mates and just make music. No one needed to declare it as their intended college major. He accepted you as a vested member of the group, even if you were there just because you love to play. My fondest high school memories have something to do with Mr. S.'s orchestra. That's what we called him, Mr. S. Even now, that's what I call him, and that's what we refer to him, and that's just the way it is. But, there isn't enough time for me to even get started about those. However, speaking of time, although time has changed some things, now, remember, this was from five years ago, it appears not to have changed much with regard to this favorite high school memory issue. The other day, five years ago, I was perusing the Downers Grove South website, and I came across a picture of this, of some, of the seniors in the top 2% of the class of 2013. I clicked on the picture, and there was a little paragraph written for or by each of those students. My heart smiled when I read Emma Chaplin's favorite memory from her high school career. Mind you, she's a 2013 graduate. It don't, well, then I go on to say that she's probably in the office, or in the orchestra that night, and she was. But, here's what Emma wrote about her favorite high school memory. This is 36 years after John Sfoboda physically left this music program that he worked so hard at. So, this is Emma's favorite quote, her favorite memory, and I quote, "Her favorite memory was spending time with other orchestra members each year after the orchestra banquet in May." We never had an orchestra banquet, but I guess they do now. "And playing ultimate frisbee. After spending a period together every day for the past four years, we've become a family." Now, that's the end of her quote. And countless alum completely agree with her. A good educator teaches and inspires those in their path. A really great educator like Mr. S., they inspire those in their path, like I was, those down the road, and those that haven't even been born yet, like my friend, my new friend, Emma. So, he's just, he was just a really, really, really inspiring kind of guy, whether you were going to major in music or not. And I hope that you vote that, to put that little Sfoboda sign over the orchestra room. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Deanne. Okay. Thank you so much. I am wishful. You'll have to watch the video. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I hope that we adjourn.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you. See you next week.